And I see trustee apt has joined us. So we have a full quorum here at seven o'clock. Miranda, you said we are recording. Is there any reason why we shouldn't dive into this tonight?
No, let's dive in.
All right, then at 7:00 PM on November 10th, 2020, I will call to order this meeting of the Town of Nederland Board of Trustees. Please call roll.
Mayor Larson.
Here.
Trustee Taylor.
Here.
Trustee apt.
Here.
Trustee Cooms Ismail. Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Here.
Trustee Danforth.
Here.
Trustee Corvallin.
Here.
Very good. We have full attendance tonight. Thank you all for joining us and thank you to everyone from the community that I see has dialed in. We have two items on the consent agenda tonight. We have the minutes and warrants from the previous few weeks. Does anyone from the Board of Trustees have questions or comments regarding the consent agenda?
There we go. We have a motion to approve from trustee Danforth.
This is trustee Taylor. I second.
Motion and second, Miranda.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee apt.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth. Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Very good. Passes unanimously. Moving on to public comment, we have one item of public comment that is in our packet this after this evening. This is the opportunity from anyone from the public who would like to speak on any other matter that we are not addressing in the rest of the agenda tonight. First, does anyone from the public, would anyone from the public like to have three minutes of public comment time? This would be your opportunity. Please either unmute yourself, raise your hand, or start speaking. I am seeing and hearing no public comment. I do want to quickly just address the public comment we got from Roy Young. I would hope, I think, our RTD board member, I'm confident you're on top of this and are taking this kind of commentary, comments back to the RTD board. I think it is definitely a concern we have coming up here on winter, particularly as we watch the cuts planned for RTD. And I would encourage, I can't actually remember who our RTD representative is off the top of my head, but I would hope you will reach out to Roy and follow up on this. We have one discussion item on the agenda this evening, which is regarding the grit removal, or no, sorry, this is the community center. Replacement of obsolete control center or control center for the community center. Too many centers in there. So please introduce this item.
So this is Karen Gary. Good evening, mayor, trustees, staff. I see our attorney Jennifer Mattson is on as well. So good evening and members of the. I come to you because I feel very strongly about this agenda item. As the wildfires and the pandemic have shown us, the Netherlands Community Center is a vital part of our community. It's so important to us. During the pandemic, even though we had to shut down for a couple of months at least, we were still able to have the Netherlands area seniors operating out of there so that they could make food and deliver it to our seniors. And people with disabilities were having our COVID testing going on there. Have been able to open again, but our, our Health and Human Services operated out of there and count on that. And it was critical and it still is critical during pandemic. In addition, with the wildfires, the Office of Emergency Management out of Boulder County made a request and asked us if we would open up the community center to help with the evacuees, to give them support, to give them supplies, water, bottled water, have a place for the Red Cross to meet with the evacuees, give them directions on where they can go, help people who had livestock or pets or whatever. How can we help you? How can we help you get what you need? So we know that this is such a critically important facility in our town. And something we've also known for years is that we have a very outdated obsolete control center for our mechanical systems. Right now, we're using a John controls model that, as I said, is obsolete. And it runs off an old Windows XP operating system. Even for those of you who aren't really technically savvy, you know, this is really outdated. It's putting us in a dangerous place. If our entire mechanical systems went down and we were in the middle of trying to activate a shelter or assist during the pandemic or whatever we have going on, it just puts us in a very unsafe situation. We have put off replacing it mainly because we originally were provided information that if we, that it was going to cost a substantial amount of money. Now, what's happened is a couple of things have happened. One is that two very well-regarded references that we go to, people we go to, Timberline Mechanical and then Andrew White of Mechanical Concepts. Both of them recommended that we reach out to Art Collins from Collins Controls Associates. And long story short, ends up that there is a way that we can upgrade the system in a way that our IT consultant is on board with, our public works manager is on board with, our Netherlands Community Center manager, myself, and folks who've been involved with this operating system and support. The other good news is that because of the pandemic, all of our departments are operating at much contingency budgets. The community center has done an amazing job. They've taken cuts in pay. We've had to furlough staff. They have deferred some building and maintenance projects. We actually, believe it or not, as of the end of August, we were able to see an increase in our fund balance, in our community fund balance of $68,595. I am congratulating Dawn Baumhofer and her team because they do an amazing job and they've still been able to do an amazing job even by saving all this money by, by cutting their expenses so deeply. Because of this situation, it puts us in a place where we could use some of that money to do this very critically important and urgent upgrade to the control center for our mechanical systems. Now, I am not an expert on this. I have relied heavily on the experts. Dawn is on the call tonight who can answer questions that you might have. So is Chris Pelletier. He's on as well and he can talk to you about more of the details. But the other thing I will tell you is that even though we are recommending that we go with Collins Controls because first of all, they were recommended by the folks we have relationship with, that we trust, who know our building, know our facility, have worked with us. But also because it's a very user-friendly system. And even though it comes, we only got one other bid and we just got that on Friday after we had posted the packet. So we updated the packet to include the bid. Even though that bid comes in at $4,000 less than the $14,850. In the front end, it's less, but in the long term, it ends up costing more when you talk about maintaining it. So our system, just so you know, includes our HVAC system and three air handlers and a boiler system. So it's, it's got several components to it. The one that we've chosen is the one that we believe is the best value, most user-friendly, and it's going to cost less in the long term to maintain it. So we're bringing this to you tonight as a discussion item. And we're asking you to consider moving this to an action item and approving it tonight. So we can begin this work. The vendor is ready to go. We could get this done this year. Or, you know, we could bring it back as either a consent agenda item at the December 1st or even maybe next week's meeting. Or as an action item then. And as I said, we've got folks here who can answer more specific details about the mechanical systems, operating control stuff, because that's, that's not my forte. But I will say that I'm coming from a place of recognizing how critically important this facility is and that we have an opportunity now to take care of an urgent need. So with that, I'll just see if you have any questions.
Karen, this is trustee Taylor. I've looked, I've looked over the specifications and I have to agree with you that CH2 appears to be a much better approach. Not only because it's open source, but because by being open source, it is going to be much cheaper to maintain over the long run. It also opens us up to the possibility of if one of our sensors servo systems goes out, we could replace it with an open interface servo system that would probably be less expensive. And so I think overall, the Linux system is superior to the FX80, which I'm assuming is also a Windows type system. I didn't see serious technical specifications on the FX80. It was as if they were not that impressed by the innards of that machine. But the, the CH2 certainly appears to be a technically superior system. And I'm agreeing with you, over the long run, I believe that would be the better choice. And I would be all in favor of turning this into an action item.
Well, you certainly said it better than I could. Thank you.
Thank you, Julian. You know, this is why I love having, I love this board of, you know, we have people who can get in and dive into the operating system and control systems and meetings. Yeah, thank you, Julian. Other trustees, do you have questions for town staff regarding the, this item? Alan, I'm gonna just go down the list here. Alan apt.
No, I don't. I think it's a full speed ahead to me.
All right. Eric Cooms Ismail.
It sounds good. I think we could do this and I am in agreement that the Linux based system sounds better.
All right. Mayor Protem Jonathan Baumhofer.
Yeah, in full agreement. It's pretty well summed up by Julian and everyone I said.
All right. Trustee Danforth.
It looks good to me and I'm in favor of it.
Tanya.
Trustee, there we go.
Yep, it sounds good.
All right. Before we address whether or not we want to, you know, move this forward into action and make a vote on this. I, it is a discussion item and particularly if we move this to action, I would like to open this up for public comment. So if anyone from the public would like to speak on the relative merits of the Linux versus Windows operating system, this would be your opportunity. Please raise your hand or begin speaking and you can have up to three minutes to speak on this. I am not seeing or hearing any, so we'll bring this back to the board. And if this board is interested in moving this to an action item tonight, as it sounds like we are, we will need a motion first to do so.
This is trustee Taylor. I move to make this an action item.
Do it in a second.
Second, Alan.
Miranda, please call the vote to move this to an action item.
Trustee apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth.
Yeah.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Very good. This is now an action item. And so if there's further discussion or if people would like to, if somebody would like to make a motion regarding which of the bids to proceed with.
This is trustee Taylor. I move to approve this as an action, this action item and to approve the CH2 quotation over the other.
Right. The cat net system CH2.
Alan, second.
Motion and a second.
Trustee Cooms Ismail.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
Trustee apt.
Yes.
Trustee Danforth. Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin. Trustee Corvallin.
Yeah, yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes. Motion passes unanimously. I look forward to
Thank you.
hearing about the installation of the system and the upgrades to what, as Karen said, is a critically important piece of town infrastructure. And particularly with regards to the emergency services and what will seem to be a rapidly approaching fire season again. All right. Well, we are moving along into our first or what is now second action item of this evening, which is our public hearing for the draft 2021 budget. I wanted to open this first by just congratulating, as I do, I think every meeting, I really want to congratulate town staff. Karen mentioned it in the, in the community center piece that we just did. We've faced some interesting difficulties this year and yet town staff has managed to keep everything under budget, to stay on top of the budget and not only that, bring forth a draft 2021 budget that addresses the goals of this town, the needs of this town and stays within a very conservative approach for which I am very grateful and give great thanks to our town hall staff, Karen, Miranda, and particularly our new town attorney, Rita Six. So please introduce the draft 2021 budget.
Great. So what I'm gonna have Miranda do is just go right to the PowerPoint. We'll do the same thing we've been doing. You all know, we've had a couple of work sessions. We've had a public meeting about this. What we're bringing to you tonight is not very different at all from what we've been presenting all along to you. But especially for those who might be here tonight or listening in, we'll, we'll kind of go over it again just to kind of bring everybody up to speed again. So we're going to go again through the sales and property tax revenue and the five-year trend. We'll touch on the fund balances and the reserve funds. We'll discuss the revenue and expenditures by fund. And then you'll conduct your public hearing at that point and open it up to the public as well as the Board of Trustees, of course. And then we'll just give you an update of where we're at in the budget process. So for our sales tax, as you know, we're pending that we budget for a 5% increase over our actuals from 2019. And so where we're at right now, we actually just got in the September sales tax information. And so this chart shows us at 6.7% above last year. And the September numbers will bring us up to 6.9%. So we're trending at right around 7%. And we just felt like better to be, you know, give ourselves a little cushion here just in case the pandemic were to continue to go south and we had to shut down the economy again and had a more substantial impact. So we think this is positioning us in a very smart way, very strategic. And again, as we've talked about at every meeting, staff is suggesting that if we do go above that 5%, that we start a CIP, a designated CIP fund with 1% of the increase. I'm sorry, you know, the 1% increase over the 5% increase. So that we would actually start having money because as we'll talk about when we get to each fund, for, for capital improvement projects, we're just using our operating revenue. We don't have any designated fund. And as we've talked about, it, it would make a lot of sense that we, we actually did do that. As we're looking at preparing to continue to replace our aging infrastructure and so forth. So sales tax still looking really good. With property tax, as we talked about, we're just basically budgeting it, budgeting it very similar to what we budgeted this year. We did increase it. It is increased a bit based on the county preliminary numbers. And I will just say right now, we are trending even higher than what we're budgeting for next year. So again, we feel like we're giving ourselves a cushion and we, we feel it's like the prudent thing to do. So on our next, we talked about our, I forgot my pages. After this, what's the next one, Miranda? Okay, fund balance. So for the fund balance, as we've been talking about at every, every one of these budgets, what we talked about is that there's two types of funds. So we've got the government funds. And those are what, what we're using for the community center, for the police department, for the streets, for administration. And what we call the non-major funds, which is like the conservation trust funds. And then we have the enterprise funds and those are for the utilities. So right now, we're going to talk about the, the general fund, the government funds. So as we've talked about, the 2019 budget had projected a loss of $172,000 in the government funds collective fund balance. But the actuals actually came out a lot better. It, it, it represented an increase of $708,000. So our fund balance has continued to improve, which is of course improving our financial position. And then the fund balances for this year are also trending higher than we budgeted. Just like the community center fund is doing so much better. And a big reason is that we did, we are still operating under those contingency budgets. But our property tax and sales tax are doing well, doing better than last year. So our sales, our tax revenue is actually, as I said, increasing while some of our earned revenue isn't doing as well. And we're really feeling it in places like the community center and then the visitor center. But all in all, our financial position just continues to get stronger. So right now, our collective fund balance, or not right now, but at the end of 2019, our collective fund balance for the government funds was $1.6 million. And I just want to remind you that that includes some reserve funds. So the $110,000 that we have from the Boulder County Housing Authority related to their tungsten village that was in lieu of their dedication of the land for public use. We also have $36,500 from the parking lease with Eldora. That's also been approved by the BOT to be used for parks improvement. And just a reminder that as staff, we're not going to use those funds without coming to you first. Or if there's something that you all would like to see those dollars go for. So that's, that's the government funds. Now with the proprietary funds, which are also called enterprise funds, those operate more, that's more like a business, you know, where, where what you want to do is make sure that the money you're bringing in through your fees are actually covering the services that you're providing. And so that's true for our water and our sewer fund. Our net position again has improved and according to the 2019 audit, our net position for the enterprise funds increased by $886,000. So I'm sharing this with you because I just want to remind you of our financial position and our net position and how, how really well we're doing. In, in the net position, it's similar to a fund balance that's on our balance sheet. There are, some of those monies are also set aside for infrastructure improvements. And they're raised through the PIF funds that are in excess of what we budgeted. So we have $242,000 in our infrastructure improvement fund. And then we have $475,000 for the water infrastructure fund. And the other thing I just wanted to remind you of is that this year, we actually set up a separate bank account that the money from both, the restricted money from both the general fund and from the proprietary funds are in a separate account now and we're tracking that regularly. So now we'll go on, we'll go. Oh, bless you. And so again, you've already seen all these numbers. There's no change on here in the general fund from what we talked about over the last three meetings. Everything is the same. Our operating budget is operating in the black. Add the CIP, things that we, we really, we have already talked about this as well, but some of this stuff is budgeted such as the annual payments that we make on the snowplow. And then we've also set aside money to contribute to purchasing a newer or new police department vehicle. We also have money in here as we talked about before, because of the Police Accountability Act that was passed in the state, we have to make some improvements with some of our equipment and we have to purchase body cameras. So we've got money for CIP, for capital improvement funds. And that's at $54,000. And then that does mean that we will be borrowing money from, or not borrowing money, but taking some of the money from the fund balance. But again, we've budgeted very conservatively. So just like 2019, when we actually budgeted to have a lot in the general fund of $132,000, we ended up with that overage, you know. So, so that's how we operate, you know, we budget very conservatively. And then we, you know, we stick to the budget and then our hope is always that, that, the, the end of the year, things are going to look really good. And that's, that's worked out well for us so far. So that's the general fund. If you do have questions, you know, just say something, speak up. Again, none of this is new. If there is any changes, I will point them out to you. So next we go to the community center and there we do have this one change. And that is adding $1,000 a month, a year to the building expenses. And that is to cover potential maintenance upkeep for the improved control system. So we just added that $1,000. Dawn was able to get a bid from the vendor, you know, to understand what would be, we'd be talking about annually that we might need to have. And they had suggested $500 to $1,000. So that's the only difference in this budget is that extra thousand in place, in case we needed to replace one of the controllers for that system. But that also, as you can see, we're operating in the black. And as I've said before, if, if the pandemic, you know, sends the economy south in such a way that we're impacted more severely than we are now, we will go again to contingency budgets. And, and the community center is still operating in a, in a contingency budget, even though they have started to open up a little bit more to the public. We, we are still being very frugal. So again, we know that if this doesn't happen, it's okay because we'll just adjust accordingly as we have. Okay, next we have the water fund and no changes on that. Okay, next we have the water fund and no changes on that. Um, from the last meet, uh, actually the last three meetings, it's, it's all stayed the same. And that has a uh, change in net assets of forty thousand dollars at the bottom. I'm not going to go through the details just because we've done this already so many times, but when I'm done, of course, your questions, happy to go there. Same thing with the sewer fund, the sewer fund, um, that's the one we've discussed that with, once we put in the CIP, we will have a slight drop. In the um, in the fund balance net position. But it, it's all work that needs to, to be done and we've discussed that as well. See, next we have the street fund and we have no changes there from the last presentation. And conservation trust fund is the same story. No changes. And then we get to the downtown development authority. And that's where there are some changes. So just, just uh, real briefly, and this is for the public as well as for the board of trustees. With the downtown development authority, they have two different funding sources. So they have the mill levy funds that come in and that's around thirty-three thousand a year, something along that line. And that's what they use for their operating budget. So that's how they pay their staff. Um, if they have an election, that's how they pay for their election costs and that type of thing. And then they have the TIF funds and that's the tax incremental funds. And those are what they use for um, capital projects and programs and things like that. They have reduced the amount of money that they're um, expecting to spend. On their uh, capital improvement projects and their TIF programs. Uh, now it's gone down about a hundred and eighty thousand. It's now at four hundred and eighty thousand instead of, I think it was around six thousand. And now you're seeing a drop in that. Um, and then the, and then the uh, debt service aligns with that. So you'll see a drop as well. So basically, as we've discussed, and it is a little complicated, they have to, according to the statute. Before they can use the money, they have to borrow the money. So even if they have the money in savings, they have to borrow it. And then once they borrow it, then they can actually expend it. Um, so that's why that debt, debt service is on there. And I also just want to remind you that anything that they bring to you, any, any TIF uh, expense. They're going to bring to you for approval first. And like they have been doing, they would likely bring it to you as a discussion item first and, and present it to you that way. And then bring it as an action item that would include a resolution that clearly signs. How much that they are going to be using and they have been borrowing that money from the town. Through our um, through our savings, through our fund balance. But then they repay it immediately because there hasn't been a situation since I've been involved. Where they borrowed money and they didn't already have that amount of money in the bank. And I don't want to go into too much detail on it, but of course, if you have questions, I'm, I'm happy to answer it. Thing, but it's, it's due requires. The other change, um, there was one other change. I think it's the uh, forty-five hundred dollars for the tax collection wasn't included last time. Uh, but it is on there now. And that is just a set fee. It, it, it's something that uh, Boulder County charges us. They collect the property tax on behalf of the town and on behalf of the DDA. So they charge a small administration fee every month, but it, it does add up. Um, so that's been added back into the budget. So that's what looks different. Than the last time that we presented this at the last um, board meeting where the budget was considered. So before we go to the next piece, which um, Rita is going to present to you our, our uh, proposed twenty-twenty-one fee schedule. But I thought before we do that, or how, how do you want to do this, Mayor? Would you like us to go through the fee schedule first? And open up the public hearing and take questions from the board and the public?
Well, let's open up right now. Does anyone from the board have questions regarding the fund balances? Because this is things we've seen before. So I would say let's uh, do any questions from the board on fund balances. Then present the fee schedule, then open it up to the public. Because the fee schedule is something most people haven't seen. So this is the opportunity. And I will just kind of uh, open this up to the board because we have seen these funds several times. So if any of the board have questions for town staff regarding the fund balances. And the um, the budget regarding the, the various funds, now is the opportunity. So please speak up now.
This is Julian. I saw nothing uh, that surprised me. It all seems pretty clear. So I'm in, I'm feeling good about that.
Thank you.
Very good.
I would like to ask if there is a line item budget for the parking fund?
Well, hold on, Ron. We're, this is board, board. We're going to get public comment in a minute.
Okay.
Yeah. Does any board members have questions for, uh, regarding the funds? If not, let's go to the fee schedule and then we'll get to you. We'll, you'll be the first public comment question, Ron.
Okay, so Rita is going to present to you the uh, suggested revisions to the fee schedule for twenty.
Good evening, Mayor, trustees and members of the public. I will keep this short. The proposed changes to the twenty-twenty-one fee schedule are listed in red. If you have any questions, the department heads will be happy to answer them.
I have a question.
Go for it, Tanya.
I'm just wondering why you raised the business license fees from fifty to a hundred when, right now, I mean, some businesses.
They reduced it.
Struggling more than others. Seems like kind of a.
They re- they reduced it now.
Yeah, Tanya, that's actually a reduction. So a new business license costs a hundred dollars. And what I'm asking is that both new and renewals cost fifty dollars. I'm currently. And then I broke out contractor though. So currently we're running contractors as business licenses. Which the application doesn't entirely relate to them. So we're creating a contractor business license and then that would be a one hundred dollars for both new and renewal.
Okay, that would be for services then?
It would be for contractors. So anyone who pulls a building permit through our planning and zoning department is required to currently have a business license.
Gotcha.
That's not common terminology, that terminology for contractors. So we'd like to.
It, it's not for the guy who comes to clean my chimney or that sort of thing.
Yeah, correct. They would still run under a regular business license, which is now fifty dollars for new and renewal.
Okay, thank you.
Any other board questions regarding the fee schedule? Hearing none, let's open the floor up to public comment. Uh, this is going to be public comment about anything budget related. And I believe first on deck will be Mr. Ron Mitchell.
And I, I can go ahead and answer that for Ron and the answer is yes. And our detailed budget, we do have a line item for the parking fund. I believe we have five thousand dollars in there right now. Rita, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. It is.
So yes, we do have a separate line item and that money is also in our restricted account.
That's correct.
Thank you. All right. Would anyone else from the public like to have a comment or questions regarding the twenty-twenty-one draft budget?
I just want to remind column users that I believe you have to press either star six or pound six to unmute yourself.
All right, I'm not seeing any hands raised or hearing anyone with questions. I guess that is testament to the job town staff has done for, preparing and presenting the budget next, for next year. Uh, do you want to talk about next steps since that's the slide I see on the screen?
Sure. So um, we will be bringing this to you for your final adoption on December first. And uh, because we do have to, uh, our statutory deadline is December fifteenth. So we want, I always like to have a couple of weeks extra wiggle room, just in case. We'll be bringing it on December first and then the next deadline that we have is to publish our budget book on January thirty-first with the state. So we are, we're just moving along. We're doing great. I just want to do special accolades to Rita. She's just been such a joy to work with and um, I, I had a little bit of stress about, you know, going into this budget season with a brand new uh, person uh, at the, you know, at the helm of the books. And she has just been amazing. And we wouldn't, we wouldn't be in the great state we're in. Uh, without her, her skills, her knowledge, her experience. And her, the way she is so approachable. And I think I speak for all the departments. When I say she's really um, so easy and available and so great to work with.
Thank you.
Here, here. All right, well, I do have one final, very important budget question.
Yes.
The state of the, who, the dog. Which dog is the budget of?
I don't know if we're going to do that because people, people get left out. If you don't have a dog, you don't get to play.
This is true. It's true.
So, so I've been thinking about doing something a little different, which I'm not quite ready to reveal.
Oh, oops, Spence, even better.
So what Chris is talking, uh, the mayor is talking about is that in the past, um, the staff's been able to submit a photo of their dog and then. Um, Jen, basically Jen and me, we picked the, the dog. Um, but it's just been so inclusive to me. And I thought with uh, with COVID and everything, maybe we could come up with something fun. So anyways, I'm working on it.
All right, look forward to seeing this. Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on to our next agenda item tonight, which is the uh, grit removal system for the wastewater treatment plant. And we have heard, this is uh, come before us before.
Um, yeah, hi Mayor, thanks.
Thank you, Chris. Yep, I was just looking to see you were online. I was, uh, see you there. Please introduce us.
Okay, great. Um, thank you, Mayor and the board. Um, this isn't going to be as exciting and sexy as uh, open source HVAC controls and municipal budgeting. I will say that Karen and Rita have done a really great job. Um, but uh.
I think you're selling our wastewater treatment plant way short on that one, if you're saying it's exciting. Come on, I've been down there.
I, I am a water geek and so that's why I'm here tonight. I am excited about um, uh, this, this piece of equipment that um, asking me to uh, consider. So um, I'm here tonight also with um, Andrew Sparn, um, who has worked with the town uh, with JVA. Uh, over the last uh, ten years or so on a variety of projects and him and his team actually designed the biosolids facility. He's here with me to help any, um, answer any questions that you might have. So uh, a brief background, um, I've talked to you guys before about the need for grit. Um, grit removal, that is, and the impacts um, that it poses on, on equipment and the process. We had an analysis uh, done back in, in June, which uh, is also added to your packet. And I think I've um, talked to you about this before. And um, actually defines grit according to size and it quantifies it for us and how much we actually have at our, at our waste treatment facility. And the analysis also provided options for um, where grit can be intercepted. And um, and again, I provide that at previous meetings and staff has chosen the appropriate place to, to remove grit. Um, and as I've explained previously, grit uh, causes wear and tear on equipment. Um, in the facility and it was truly brought to light or realized when um, the biosolids facility started up. And we saw the impacts that it had on one of our pumps. Because currently, staff does do its best to mitigate grit. Some of that grit um, remained and trained in the flow, depending on how fast the flow is moving and it can pass right on by. You know, any, any um, obstacles that we may have in the uh, headworks building and just continue on through to the process. So we're not able to capture everything. Um, so uh, at your September first meeting, I presented to you the idea of a phased approach to implementing grit removal. Within the existing budgeted funds and I provided you sort of a breakdown of what CIP funds are this year. And um, and that we have some funds left over from um, I and I worked that we've done this year. And um, um, but since then, um, after, and after discussing with Andrew. I've come up with a slightly different approach to funding grit removal. Though at that last meeting, um, there is somewhat of a consensus that this was necessary. Um, and you had directed me to, to come back to you with a more formal plan for what I wanted to uh, for, for how I want to move forward. On this sort of phased approach for adding grit removal. So um, after discussing this with Andrew, like I said, I think that um, better way to approach this and um, and, and get the project done and maximize the town's dollars. So um, in your packet tonight, I've included a proposal from JVA. Um, to design and permit uh, grit removal through CDPHG for the amount of forty-six thousand dollars. Um, the approach that I'm proposing tonight is to reallocate CIP funds specifically for design and permitting. I believe, staff believes that there's an opportunity here to apply for a grant. Um, in twenty-twenty-one. That would match the town's dollars and, and um, maximize the town's funds. And um, and maybe get to, get to the end goal uh, quicker. So um, that's basically what I'm asking you tonight. Um, like I said, I'm here, I can answer any questions. Andrew's here, if there are any questions. Um, and um, one last thing, the, the idea here with this approach is that by having a permit. In place through CDPHG, having a design in hand. Having funds budgeted in CIP next year for grit removal. Replace the town in a very good position with funders. Um, and show that the town is shovel-ready to move forward and match whatever funds there may be available to complete this project. Other idea was that um, through DOLA, which is one of the uh, funders that we're considering going through. Um, they have invested considerably in the biosolids facility. And that this um, is the protection of, of this investment. Through the town's efforts and through their efforts. So again, we believe that this is a solid approach for um, for matching the town's dollars and, and completing uh, this important. So again, uh, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And again, Andrew's here also to answer.
All right, thank you very much, Chris. That was a, a really well um, laid out summary of where this project stands and the options ahead of us. So thank you for that. Uh, questions from the board of trustees for, for Chris or Andrew? I'll just going to go in reverse order here and see if anyone has those, beginning with uh, trustee Corbland.
No, I don't have any questions.
All right, thank you, Tanya. Uh, trustee Danforth.
No questions at this time.
All right, trustee Taylor.
So Chris, I noticed that uh, in our last discussion, we talked about the three options for our long-term solution. And I'm looking at the work that we're scheduling here, the work that's being requested. Does this work favor any one of those three options? Or is it, is it, is it open to any one of those options right now?
Yes, it does favor, um, and I forget how the options are labeled, but one of the options propose intercepting grit at the beginning of the headworks. I said, another option intercepted grit through already available knockout. I said, another option intercepted grit through already available knockouts in the, the headworks building. And then the, the third method was um intercepting grit after the headworks. And for a variety of reasons, um, the best uh scenario is to utilize the existing knockouts within the, the headworks facility that already exists and intercept grit um prior or just after the solid screening process. So that's, we're still aiming in that direction and we were at the um, the last meeting as well.
Right. Okay, very fine. Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you, Julian. Mayor Protem Baumhofer.
Uh, I think a very thorough presentation and we've seen this a few times before, particularly myself and I believe yourself, Mayor. Um, I just wanted to thank you, Chris, for getting after this and um fully in support of this project.
Thank you.
Indeed. Uh, Trustee Kumsesmail.
Yeah, I just wanted to, uh, I'm totally clarify essentially just changing the way that we're gonna fund this.
That's correct. Yeah, first of all, I'm asking you to reallocate funds that you've already budgeted for that won't be spending this year. And then again, changing the way that we fund it next year and, and hoping that we double our, our money next year. So um, I would just keep the board informed and I'm essentially asking you to fund this proposal tonight for forty six thousand dollars. But in the future, I'll be asking to apply for grant funding.
Great, thank you.
And uh, oh, Trustee Apt.
Looks like a well thought out approach and a good financial strategy. So thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Yeah, I wanna echo what they, what uh the other trustees have said and particularly wanna thank you guys for, for finding those uh DOLA funding opportunities. I know we've had very good luck with them in the past and I have no doubt you guys are gonna put together a great proposal for them and hopefully we'll get that funding next year.
Awesome.
This is an action item, uh, so I want to open up the floor to public comment uh from anyone from the public would like to speak on the matter of grit removal. Now is your chance, uh, raise your hand or speak up and you'll can have up to three minutes to speak on this proposal. I am not seeing or hearing any comments from the public. So bring this back to the board for any further comments, questions, thoughts, or a motion to approve the forty six thousand dollars and uh proceed towards getting grant funding, matching grant funding from DOLA.
Trustee Kumsesmail had moved to approve this item.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
This is Julian, I second.
We have a motion and a second on the table. Miranda.
Trustee Taylor.
Yes.
See Danforth. Trustee Danforth.
Yeah, sorry, my, my audio is breaking up a lot, yeah.
Uh, Trustee Apt.
Yes.
Trustee Kumsesmail.
Yes.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin.
Yes.
Um, Mayor Protem Baumhofer.
Yes.
Motion approved unanimously. Uh, again, Chris, thank you so much for uh all the work you put in on this and best of luck with DOLA.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving right along to our next agenda item, which is the continuation or the, yeah, the continuation from the um PUD hearing we had, our PUD um application that we had about a month ago, uh, the Little Bear PUD. And so uh tonight, we're going to be hearing back from the, the Billings. And we're going to start with a staff introduction by our own Miranda Fisher, uh, followed by the presentation for the Billings. And before we dive into that, I, I just wanna start by uh thanking uh the Billings for the, the work they put in for uh reading through this and seeing the uh, the way you've addressed the questions and concerns of the Board of Trustees. I'm just really appreciative of the work you guys have done. I'm really looking forward to hearing more of your presentation this evening. And uh, so I will then hand this over to Miranda for an introduction.
Okay, so as Mayor Larson said, this is a consideration of the final planned unit development and density increase for Little Bear Village. You'll see in the aim, I did keep the summary that uh Cynthia Baki, Deputy Zoning Administrator, had put together just for context. Um, the plan though tonight is to really focus on the conditions that were made uh prior at the last meeting in which the Bullions were at the September fifteenth meeting. Let me scroll to that. Um, just a quick note, I did update the comprehensive plan um specific to kind of how they meet housing. It is just a reminder that that is a, a non-regulatory document and thus just serves as an advisory framework. So at the September fifteenth meeting, Mayor Protem Baumhofer made a motion to continue the application to October twentieth. Um, the Bullions did ask to then move that to tonight, which is why we're hearing it in November. At that meeting, though, there were five conditions that were put into place. The conditions were that the applicants completed a view shed analysis, that the maximum height be reduced to twenty four feet and that there was a good faith effort made to really modify the architectural design so it fit better within the neighborhood. Um, Trustee Kumsesmail made a friendly amendment to also require the applicants to address concerns of environmental sustainability and economic affordability. Um, as Mayor Larson said, the Bullions have really worked hard over the last two months to meet some of these conditions that were put before by the board. Um, I do wanna let them really speak to their project, but prior to, I just wanna highlight a couple of things. One of the conditions was a view shed analysis. And so the Bullions did loop me into a conversation they had with an architect um at Bruce Oll LLC, which was recommended to them by their engineer. And with that conversation, really the architect shared that without a clear policy from the town of Netherlands to review that height, completing a view shed analysis is really a challenge. Um, they also noted that the height should really be reviewed as in, as it affects the overall look from town from both the main roads and the perspective of pedestrians. Um, it's not really realistic to take into account every resident's view into consideration. It would create chaos and make development in Netherlands impossible. This is a quote from the architect. Um, and that she concluded with, no one is guaranteed the same view forever unless they live right next to a reserve or protected land. But they do not have a view shed analysis. Um, again, it just was not, it was recommended to them that it was not gonna serve the purpose that the board was. You'll see in the packet, they did reduce the height to twenty four feet, one inch. Um, from an architectural design plan, you'll note that they went around town and, and showed that there are similar designs to what they're proposing throughout town and they have some photos to demonstrate that. From an environmental sustainability standpoint, um, the board had talked about changing the orientation of the building to help with sun exposure. They really can't do that because it's gonna make it hard for them to meet the setback requirements. Um, but instead in their presentation, they are outlining some of the ways in which Little Bear Village really meets some of the sustainable goals, outline about the comprehensive plan and then some of the SAB documents I turned them over to, so SAB-specific plan. And then in terms of economic affordability, you know, the applicants have really maintained since day one that this is market rate housing. They don't have a partnership with a housing developer that specializes in affordable housing and also are not approved for the low housing income credit, um, which is under the Federal Tax Reform Act, which is really what's tied to affordable housing. Uh, that being said, it does create housing in the community, which is a goal of the comprehensive plan. And not only that, it's within town limits and a part of the PDA district, which gives them access to key destinations and also helps to really develop land that is currently being. Oh, prior to um their presentation, I do want to just ask that you hold off on questions. Um, we wanna make sure that the applicants are the ones who are doing the answering, since it is their project. So I'm going to turn it over to them to, to review their slides. Dennis Mallon, are you there? You're a little scratchy, but.
Can Ellen, maybe, maybe turn off your video feed so that will reduce the bandwidth requirements. Might help the audio on both your hearing and transmitting. Can you turn off your camera? I can see you right now, but if you turn off your camera, it might improve your audio quality. Give that a try.
I'm sending her a message, so hopefully that. So you're a little, you're a little scratchy. We might need to add you in via phone. So let me, can we take a few moment breaks? I can, I, do you want me to call you? Okay, I'm gonna call her.
This is our, this is our last agenda item for this evening, so we will just uh kind of give a few minute pause here while we work out the technical difficulties. Uh, so everyone just kinda, you know, if you need to get a glass of water or something, now might be a very good time to do so.
Okay, I think I have. Sorry, that's me, hold on. Okay, Ellen, are you there? Yes, uh huh. Can you hear me or is there an echo?
Do you wanna turn off your sound on your laptop, Ellen, so that you can get the feedback onto your computer? So just mute your sound altogether. Like turn off your volume on your computer.
Okay.
Yes, I think. I'm now on the phone with you all, so Mayor Larson, I think it'll be you telling us if it's better.
Yes, it is sounding a little bit better now, Ellen, so.
Okay, great. Um.
Yes, much better.
I'm just, um. Yeah, we're pulling the video back up. We had turned off my camera, so bear with me one second. Okay, now I can, I can see the presentation on the screen. Did you want me to wait a little while longer or did you want me to start?
I, I think we're ready to go ahead. Uh, appreciate you guys giving us this presentation and we can see it on our screen and can hear you pretty well. So let's uh, let's dive into it.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, okay, well, this is just the intro slide, so um Miranda, if you wanna go ahead and go to the next slide, please. Um, we wanted to take just a brief moment to um respond to some previous public comments from the last meeting um to clarify, I think, some confusion that may be out there in the community. Um, the first one, it was uh, it was stated last, at the last meeting, that we were charging, going to charge twenty eight hundred dollars rent. I want to state that this is false. We've never stated that. We've said consistently the units would be market uh rate, what, whatever that has to be at this point. Um, looking down the road quite a, quite a ways until this project is done. Um, the second thing was that another statement that was made with rent, uh, we would be renting them at maximum capacity, six people to each unit. Um, wanna state that that is false. Um, being mindful of our housing laws, uh, we, you know, you, you vet individual uh tenants and I, I don't think it's a goal of any um landlord to, to max out um the capacity. Capacity is a consideration in vetting uh prospective tenants, but um it is clearly not a goal to, to have a property uh maxed out by, by any stretch of the imagination. Um, we also have in our leases that there is no subletting and there is no long-term visitors. Uh, that is in the lease, long-term visitors being defined, I believe, as uh more than ten days. Um, the third point we just wanted to address is that it's, it's been said many times that we're outside developers and that we don't care about Netherlands. Just wanted to state that that also is false. Um, that we're not outsiders. We've owned in Netherlands since two thousand eight. Um, we've purposefully chosen Netherlands to retire to. We wanted to invest in and enhance our local community and we do it here full-time. Um, Dennis has been seeing Eldora since the Earl family owned it and um they had night skiing way back when. So he has a long history to Eldora and to Netherlands. Um, okay, moving on, next slide, please. Okay, um, the next slide, slide, we um, in trying to show that our projects do look high in architecture. We went around and took um various photos. Most of them are from Third Street um on the east side out of seventy-two and also the west side. Um, a couple are from uh across from um the, the strip mall on the other side of town. Um, and this is in compliance with section sixteen one fifty-eight A five, that the project is of overall compatible architectural design. So as you can see, um, the first one on the left, that's a house on Third Street. It has a stone skirt. It's made of natural log siding. Um, really around town siding is everywhere. It's either natural log siding, it is uh cement board siding, uh, or there is also vinyl siding, which is a plastic um product. Um, the, the house on the right has uh, you know, stone also around the bottom and there is a, a small cantilever on the top floor. Um, next slide, please, Miranda. Um, these next projects, um, this one is on, the first picture is on First Street. It has horizontal, horizontal hardy siding and then vertical uh siding down below in the skirt. Uh, Wendy Williams, um, the two projects, you know, that we have photos of here. She uses a combination of either metal siding in the middle picture, horizontal siding. Um, she had some shingles up in the gable over the door. And then the photo on the right, she does use uh some log siding and again horizontal siding and vertical uh metal siding. Next picture, please, or next slide, please. Um, the first picture is looking up from Fourth Street there. Um, this was, or actually it was off Caribou Road. Um, and looking up on the hillside, this home does have a cantilever over the front door in the lower portion. It also has the corbels in the roof. Next there is the Presbyterian Church with corbels. Uh, the next house across the street has more corbels. Not the best picture, I apologize. But on the left, you can see it and then outside of, on the right side, not in the picture, facing the highway, uh, there are more corbels. Um, and um again siding, shake siding or either horizontal siding. Next slide, please. Um, more pictures of siding, um, cantilever in the middle, uh, shutters on the, on the right-hand side. Uh, and again, more horizontal siding. Next slide, please. Um, this house is on Third Street, um, horizontal siding um on both floors. The community center does have a stone skirt and then the last picture is the house also on Third Street with horizontal siding and shutters. Uh, next slide, please. Okay, the next three slides are, are updated renderings. Um, and so thanks, you might need to, um, yeah, thank you, Miranda. Um, so again, excluding from the last meeting, the ten feet between the buildings as required by code, the five-foot setback on the left side, um, and the height has been reduced to twenty four point one. And the height has been reduced to 24.1, 24 feet, one inch. Our engineer has said he can get it to that, to that, uh, height, so we are going with that. So I'm glad he said he could do that. We do plan to, um. Well, I first want to explain, we have modified the roofline a little bit. We have added two gables on this side, small gables. And you'll see when we get to the other, uh, pictures, they're also on the other side. We have added, uh, shingles into the gable and also there is a bracket, the little, the detail that's a little hard to see. But we have horizontal siding, sanding. Thanks, Miranda. And, um, again, hopefully we will be able to, uh, have enough logs to do, to use the reclaimed logs from, uh, the Little Bear deconstruction. And then on the three other sides, it would be either stone siding, uh, metal siding, or possibly, uh, some, it's siding, additional cement siding that is, um, you know, contracted in application, whether it's horizontal or vertical. If you could scroll down just a little bit, um, Miranda, so these, this list is on all three pages for our additional renderings. The, the possibilities, um, for our designs are the hardy band, the corbels, um, the brackets in the gables, and then architectural fiberglass shingles on the roof. And once again, storage is provided inside each unit for all personal belongings. Uh, next slide, please. Thanks. And this is, um, seeing here, you have a little bit better view of where the corbels would be. There is a slight cantilever on the, um, west-facing side and on the east-facing side. Because these are just renderings and we're limited by the software, um, just wanted to show, this was a type of shutter, um, that we could choose in the program. They would be more rustic in design. These are not the design of the shutters that we would be using. Yes, it's just a representation of shutters. Um, and also to address the color scheme, um, we do want to, we do want to have each unit, you know, all four units would be slightly different color. So it's not just a block all the same color. They would still be in the same family. And the colors we envision using would be muted alpine colors such as greens, brown tones, creams. There would be no pastels or no bright primary colors such as red, blue, et cetera. Okay, next, uh, slide, please. And then this is the view, well, this is the east view, right, with the west elevation. And so once again, you can see the gables, the small gables, um, on two of the unit. And then there are, uh, corbels underneath the cantilever. Um, there is room for barbecue, et cetera, on the patio to the right, um, sliding glass door. And these, these rooms are actually the master bedroom. There is one extremely large window, seven feet by five feet. The other two walls, one wall is taken up with wall-to-wall closets. And then the other wall, um, is for, for furniture, et cetera. Um, okay, uh, next slide, please, Miranda. Thank you. These are the woodscapes that were an additional requirement given at the last BOT meeting. They have to, um, I think zoom in a little bit. This is the view from, um, Highway 119, looking north. Uh, you can see the, we might have to go a little bit to the right. The brewery is, um, approximately 20 feet. You can see the peak, a little bit, the peak behind the tree, the building is just slightly, uh, taller than that. Um, and then we do have one more view. Miranda, if you could go to the next slide, please. And this is the view from Third Street, looking east. So those are the two woodscapes, um, that were required from our last meeting. This next, um, page, it has to do with, uh, requirement 16158A2. Application is consistent with the comprehensive plan and also, uh, the sustainability friendly amendment from Trustee Koon. So I did note, um, four different places in the comprehensive plan. I will just touch on these, um, that we felt, um, we aligned with. Um, and while we do not align with every goal in the comprehensive plan, we do align with several. So on page six, it talks about, uh, the use of sustainable materials in buildings. Page seven, the development footprint optimization and infill development and redevelopment, et cetera. And that keeps the Netherlands from sprawling outward, building outward, and protects undeveloped tracts of land for open space. On page seven, also it states, long-range planning guides the redevelopment and revitalization of existing developments when they reach upsemination. So enabling them to regenerate and function in a more sustainable manner. It also stresses that, uh, sustainability aims to decrease, you know, our carbon footprint, minimize impact on natural systems, and promote strong social and economic vibrancy. Page 38, um, talks about having a compact and walkable land use pattern, which is detailed to do long-term sustainability. The comprehensive plan encourages growth toward infill and redevelopment parcels in the downtown core, which our property is located in, rather than outlining areas of town that have limited access to existing infrastructure. And land use within the downtown core should continue to be mixed, promoting a liberal environment, walkability, and use of existing utility systems. So we believe, uh, the Little Bear project is consistent with that comprehensive plan and contributes, uh, to and aligns with many sustainability goals. First of all, Little Bear Village aligns with the concept of infill development and redevelopment, helping prevent outward building and to protect undeveloped open space and trails and minimizes the impact on natural systems. Secondly, in Little Bear Village, use like energy efficiency, current building technology, and sustainable building materials. And practices where possible, hazardous material remediation was performed on the existing buildings prior to deconstruction and to remove, uh, the stuff there. Uh, we did salvage all possible lumber and building materials that stood. And we are saving them for reuse and repurpose in the construction of the new townhome. Additionally, we, the Little Bear Village will utilize the following: energy-efficient tankless electric water heaters and electric furnaces, which can be easily converted to solar as the cost of solar comes down and becomes more affordable. New energy-efficient windows, hardy cement board siding, which is an eco-friendly and sustainable building product. It does not utilize, uh, any trees or lumber. No trees are chopped down to produce the product. Thirdly, Little Bear Village utilizes a compact land use pattern and its residents will have walkable access to public transportation shops and will thereby help to reduce Netherlands' carbon footprint and also support the economic vibrancy of Netherlands' businesses. And lastly, Little Bear Village will utilize the existing water and sewer taps and thereby make use of the town's existing utility systems that are already in place. Thank you, Miranda. Yeah, we'll go to the next slide. We may need to just zoom in. We just wanted to reiterate so that we comply with all the requirements of Section 16158. That the application is generated compatible with adjacent land uses, which we are in the neighborhood commercial zone. And multifamily, uh, is, is, uh, in this zone. Requirement three, which is the town has the capacity to serve a proposed use with water, sewer, fire, and police protection. Yes, this was confirmed during, um, previous sessions in the planning commission. Requirement number four, the number of dwelling units permitted by the underlying zoning district is not exceeded by the planning development plan. Uh, this is also true. And then, uh, requirement five, inspection, the planning unit development utilized the natural character of the land and ensures compliance with the performance standards. And these are both met. If we scroll down a little, the off-street parking and, uh, requirement, which is Section 16158, is also in A5. And then also, uh, vehicular circulation is also encompassed in that, uh, section five there, uh, which we covered in detail, uh, previously. And then if we scroll to the bottom, um, I think there's one more requirement, um, which is, it deals with the landscaping. Just that is, uh, bustling and aesthetic landscaping. We have three ash and trees planned, five different boulders. There are four two-by-three foot planter beds containing three winged owens, browse, and oil shrubs, shrubs and mulch in front of each unit. And the remaining space is escape native grasses. And I think we can go to the next slide. Thank you, Miranda. Um, this last slide, uh, is addressing the, uh, request from Trustee Koon, uh, to address affordable housing. And while our purpose is not affordable housing, um, we, we are not partnered with any, um, public entity or quasi-governmental entity in, in the development of Little Bear. It is, uh, just us and, uh, loans that we get. So, um, it is privately funded, but, um, and while it is not affordable housing, it does provide much needed additional housing within the town of Netherlands. And it will also develop land within town limits that is currently unused. And again, helps with that infill and redevelopment as opposed to, uh, you know, developing additional tracks, uh, on the outskirts. And I guess we can just go to the next slide, Miranda. Thank you. In summary, we, um, just wanted to, to thank the BOT for your review of our applications and, um, your consideration of our project. And although this, we do feel this has been a challenging process and has been complicated by COVID. You know, this started back before the pandemic. We, uh, do acknowledge the value of getting, you know, taking your time, um, and the community's time and getting valuable input, um, from residents, um, so forth. So, um, we're appreciative of participating in this project. And, um, we look forward to, uh, moving this project forward, um, and getting some additional housing in Netherlands. And, um, we'll just conclude with that.
Thank you very much, Ellen, for that presentation. And, uh, thank you, Dennis, too, because I know you're there, even if we can't see you on the camera. Uh, thank you both for addressing the, some of the, a lot of the concerns and questions that were brought forward by the board and the public. What I'd like to do now is have an opportunity for the BOT to have a little discussion, ask questions of, um, of the applicants, uh, or of town staff. So this is kind of an open chance for the board to ask questions, uh, follow-ups on questions we had a month ago, new questions come up. Then we will go to public comment and have an opportunity for the public to ask questions of the applicants and a chance for those applicant, the applicants to respond to those questions. So this is the opportunity for the board. I'm going to just, uh, call on board members. I'm gonna kind of go in a random order this time to keep, uh, keep this organized. And I will begin, uh, let's begin with, uh, Trustee Koon's mail, because I know, uh, they just addressed some of your questions. So we'll, uh, have you open this up for us tonight. Do you have any questions for the applicants or town staff?
That was very thorough, uh, clearly addressed many of the issues that were presented. And I'm inclined to, to, uh, move forward on this personally.
Thank you, Eric. Uh, Trustee Danforth.
Hi, sorry, there, I was just coming off mute. I really appreciate all the hard work that's gone into the modifications that we asked for. It certainly looks to me a lot better than, you know, the first time that we reviewed it. And, um, I think the only thing I was thinking about is that recently, um, I had a wildfire assessment done on the house. And so I'm thinking about wildfires, considering also what we've been through in the last couple of months. And having the reclaimed wood on the lower level of the house, um, I'm not sure if that is a wildfire concern or not. Has this been inspected, um, or reviewed for any kind of wildfire, um, issues?
I think everybody's had that concern top of their mind. We're looking at that, um, you know, with our home. But the cement board siding, it, it is, um, fire resistant, right, Dennis? I mean, that's what, that's the siding they do want you to have. We are, we have a member with wildfire partners for our, um, residents, uh, south of town. But the logs, I hadn't, I hadn't thought about that. It was such a bummer.
Being in the middle of town like that, we didn't. And across the street from the fire station, it didn't really, it's, uh, too risky.
Well, I know Rick Hendrickson is on and he might be able to weigh in on that, Rick.
Yeah, this is Rick Hendrickson, Fire Marshal of the Fire Protection District. Yeah, well, I appreciate the use of the wood, uh, the reclaimed wood siding. It doesn't fit in the, uh, town's building code for the fire-resistant materials you have to have on the exterior of the building. And that applies, uh, wherever you are in town, uh, within 20 feet of a property line. So both buildings fall within that, so they would, uh, that wouldn't be acceptable.
Would they, would they be able to have the wood on the outside, say, if they took the fire-resistant siding, um, all the way to the, to the ground? And then had that wood outside of that, is that acceptable? Make that work, or is it just no?
Probably, probably not, because it could still, if it were to catch fire, it could still extend upward and, uh, eventually degrade even the, that hardy board that they have there. There, there may be some coatings or something, but that would be a question for the building department, uh, at a later date. That's not something I can answer right now.
Well, we can always take the stone skirt all the way around. And I guess those logs are just in the front for, for the, uh, architectural value.
Oh, yeah. That's really a bummer. But, I mean, if that's what we have to do.
Yeah, if it's, if it's not allowed by code, that, that won't be, we can't do it.
Yeah, and that would, the building department would catch that during plan review, uh, once those plans are submitted as well.
Yes, I like the idea of having the two different, um, architectural items, having a, you know, siding plus something of visual interest, uh, lower to the ground. So I'm hoping that if the, if the wood is not allowed because it's a fire hazard, that there's something else, whether it's metal, um, you know, a metal siding to go around the base, or stone, something that could replace that potentially, that, that would also kind of have that same feel, that fills that two-tone, would be really nice.
Absolutely, yeah. And that was in our presentation. I mean, we were only going to have enough logs, we were hoping, just on that front side where the garages are. But the other three sides were either metal, stone. There is some hardy siding that can be used as a skirt around that. So, so yes, it'll be one of those three. Now it will not, yeah, it won't be the logs in the front.
Okay. Uh, yeah, that was, that was the only thing that was on my mind was, was just, you know, wildfires, since we've been dealing with that so much. But otherwise, I think that you guys have gone above and beyond to meet the requirements that we've set forth for you guys with the lowering of the height, um, to the architectural aspect. um to the architectural aspects that we asked for. I think that now it looks like it does fit with the neighborhood. So um, and and this fits with our, our comprehensive plan of of infill um and providing housing. So I appreciate you bringing this project before us and and showing your willingness to listen to us and listen to the neighborhood. So I, I think that speaks volumes. So thank you again. And um, I think I'll pass this on to somebody else.
Thank you for bringing up the logs. We, we hadn't even thought about that.
The constantly changing environment in which we, we work in the town and build and wildfires, I think, is the, the latest thing that is going to be driving a lot of our decisions. So uh, thanks for bringing that up, Lindsay. Uh, trustee Corvallin.
Um, I would add to that, uh, to put a metal roof on there. I don't know. I think it was just shingles. Is that right?
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know if you're required to do metal roof. I know the insurance companies like it. Um, and it's a lot of fires start from sparks flying from, you know, across the street, even landing on your roof and then spreading downward like that. So just uh, that's, I think that would be a really good thing to do when you do your roof. Is it required for new construction or just suggested?
It's not a requirement, I'm sorry. You know, oh. Correct.
That's again.
Requirement.
Right. That's again something. Something that can come up in the plan review and the building code review where they were to catch the, the things like the logs as well. Um, and so I think, yeah, it'd be great to have that looked at, but I don't believe it is a requirement in the town of Netherlands.
It is not, no.
Anything else, Tanya?
No.
All right, trustee Apt.
I would also like to thank the applicants for all the work they put into this. I think it's uh uh appreciated, and I think it'll be a major asset uh for housing here in Netherlands. So thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Taylor.
Yeah, I, I still find the buildings a little overwhelming, but I can find no statutory or code or um any other reason to deny this. I would like to echo what everyone else has said. I believe the Bull Youngs have put some serious work into this. This is by far and away a significantly better proposal than the original, and I greatly appreciate the efforts the Bull Youngs have put in. And I believe it is consistent with generally what the neighbors have been requesting, and I'm, I'm feeling pretty good about it. That's it for me.
Thank you, Julian. Mayor Protem Baumhoffer.
Yeah, I would just have to echo what the rest of the board has said, uh, particularly, I think Lindsay kind of nailed it on the head, is you guys have went far beyond and above what many applicants would be willing to. And uh just want to commend you in going through all this in the middle of the pandemic virtually and working with our town staff. Kind of all the above. I really do appreciate the amount of work and also the commitment and investment in the community as well. As much as we have done so much to critique this project, I just wanted to kind of thank you for investing in our community to a certain extent and being the place that you want to retire in, really uh coming in with best intentions and doing all the work. So I appreciate it and we are glad to see construction start.
Thank you, Jonathan. Uh, so the problem when I bounce around, I believe that is all of the trustees I've called on. I don't go in an order. I lose track of uh, get anyone. So I think that's everyone except for myself. Um, and I will just echo what others have said. Uh, thank the Bull Youngs for the work they've put in. And um, I would like to open this up now to public comment. I know I see several familiar faces and names in the audience. So uh, we will have public comment. Uh, anyone can speak for up to three minutes. And we're going to do this because the Bull Youngs have responded, um, have requested they have an opportunity to respond. So uh, if there are any questions from the public uh raised for the applicants themselves, the applicants will then have an opportunity to respond at the end of that, uh, and then we'll go on to the next public comment. Um, so anyone from the public who would like to speak, now is your opportunity. Uh, raise your hand, unmute, wave in your camera so I can see you. Uh, somehow gets my attention.
And then again, another reminder, it's star six to unmute yourself if you're calling.
Yes, thank you, Miranda. Yeah, Scott, I had a feeling it might be you. I was waiting. Uh, unmute yourself. And uh, three minutes, just a reminder, your name and whether you're a town resident or not.
Yeah, this is Scott Pat, the four seventy west third street, town resident just down the street. And I'm so I'm looking at something in the, in this presentation earlier, and it's back on page, it looks like page seventy eight, I think it is. Point B, the board may recommend any conditions for inclusion in the final approval. And I'm just curious. I'm not a member of the board, and so I'm curious if twenty-four foot wanted height, if that is in fact a requirement or if it can be a requirement for approval. Um, so that, you know, there aren't changes that happen during the process of I think this bill. Make sense?
I think that does. And I think that might be a process question uh that would have for town staff. If we approve the uh, the P U D density increase and plan before us tonight, do we need to explicitly call out the twenty-four foot or is that because that's in there? Um, and then that's something that uh during plan review would be also monitored.
Uh, Trini Madsen's on, so I'd like her to weigh in on that. Jennifer?
Hello, yes, I am on. And if that's um an important factor to the Board of Trustees in terms of approving this P U D application, you can certainly make it part of the um P U D agreement and a condition for approval. Um, I would also, it sounds like the applicant will agree to that condition as well.
That's correct.
Okay. Um, thank you, uh, Jennifer Man, uh, Jennifer Madsen. Um, and thank you, Scott, too, for bringing that up.
Thank you, Chris.
Do we have any other public comments? Anyone else like to speak from the public?
Andrew Bliss.
Andrew, please, you have the floor.
Thanks, Mayor. Andrew Bliss, I'm Scott's neighbor on Third Street. Just wanted to thank the board, staff, and the developers for listening to the neighbors and problem solving and finding a compromise. So thank you.
Here, here. We have, anyone else from the public like to speak?
Yes, Ron Mitchell, here.
Ron, please, the floor is yours.
I really laud these folks after the last hearing. They could have canceled this. And under code, as I understand it, and I could be wrong, uh, they could have just built a duplex thirty-five feet high without any approval at all. But I think they've gone over backwards to try to uh meet all of the requirements. And I from the sounds of what you're saying, I think you're going to approve it, and I would encourage you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Anyone else from the public? If not, we will come, bring this back to the board for any further discussion. There's a couple things I just want to highlight. Um, if we do
To comment.
If anyone was, oh, sorry, yes.
Sorry, I was giving someone else a possible chance because I'm on the phone. Um, this is um Chris Marcio. Um, I'm the owner of Knotted Root Brewing Company. Um, the most immediate neighbor next to this project. Um, can I, can I get started? Is that cool?
Please, the floor is yours for three minutes.
Great. Um, I also want to thank um Dennis and Ellen. Um, I have been communicating with mostly Dennis. Um, but um them as neighbors throughout this, and they certainly have taken into consideration the um neighborhood's um concerns and um, you know, made a good compromise with the height and the building and the town's vision. Um, so good on everything. I think it's great. The only thing I would like to just comment on moving forward um in terms of town precedent, there was um, I believe it was um Miss Danforth who required last time a view shed analysis. I just want to touch base that the um, on page nine on the application, um, it actually says that there was no view shed analysis conducted and that there needs to be more requirements from the town. And that quote, no one is guaranteed the same view forever unless they live right next to a reserve or protected land. And I would say, although that is true, I would say from a board perspective, it might benefit um the areas of town that might be more vulnerable to um, you know, having a developer who stay less conscious of the neighbors come in and just say whatever, we're going to build as tall as we want because we can. Um, having some um actual concrete um provisions and ideas on how to approach this sort of thing when concerns are brought up. Um, I mean, our, our view in terms of direct sunlight and things are, it's, it's going to be the most impacted. At the same time, twenty-four feet is, I think, very reasonable for this sort of project and this side of town. So that's the only comment I would like to make is concrete um sort of precedence for that sort of request from the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chris. Yeah, I think that's something we'd, you know, we've seen something we'd want to look at in terms of uh possible new process and procedures for development within the town of Netherlands. Uh, try to codify that in such a way that it is um more uniformly expressed. I'll throw this out there again, if there's any further public comment, because I know we've got at least one other call-in user.
Yeah, I've got one quick comment. Uh, this is Jeff Lynch. I live on Forest Road behind the community center. Um, I've been on a bunch of these calls. So first, thank you guys for the opportunity just to be a part of the process and understand what's going on. Um, I'll second, I'm going to send, echo a little bit of Chris's comments here, but uh I'll, I'll second the bringing the height down to twenty-four feet. You know, we've been, I've been part of three of these calls, and it sounds like they have been listening to the neighbors. I'm certainly in close proximity, but not as close as even the folks that are on West Third there. But um, you know, the, the view is everything. I think, you know, I, I, I've mentioned on both previous times that I've spoken just about changing the dynamic of the town and the aesthetic and what that, that expectation is. And I just really wanted to put it out there for moving forward, just for the board and everyone to be conscious of that. And uh, Chris kind of beat me to the punch on the view, right? I mean, especially in this type of example where something is extremely west adjusted on the perimeter of the town. I just uh you know, Christopher, your comments, I, I just hope that they are received and processed kind of moving forward, just because I, I think preserving what we have here as well as preserving our view and preserving sun and preserving what people are used to is key. Granted, that's not somebody's right that everything's going to stay the same for forever, but it would be nice if there were certain sets of standards that were consistently followed in town. So once again, thank you for the opportunity to those folks building. Thanks for working with your neighbors and uh that community at hand. It's certainly appreciated and uh have a great night.
Thank you, Josh.
Yeah.
Another call for public comment?
Yeah, this is Mandy Pappage.
Yeah, Mandy.
Hey there. Um, yeah, I also would like to echo what Chris and Jeff just mentioned. Um, that was actually a concern I had reading through the document around the view shed analysis. Um, the, the view shed analysis was not done. And I just want to point out that um a view shed analysis of, is a very common feature that's done in G I S software. It's very easy to do from many different angles. Boulder County does it all the time when they build things um to see what people's views are from different angles, and it's not complicated whatsoever if the company is savvy enough to be able to have G I S software to do that. Um, you know, I really appreciate um you know, the fact that the architecture has been changed a bit to fit in a little bit more with the neighborhood. And I appreciate the effort that is being made to um work a bit more with the neighbors here. But I will have to say that, you know, this twenty-four foot magical number that we've all come to, uh, we still don't know if it blocks our views of the mountains to the west. Um, we, we don't have this view shed analysis. And although I, I understand that nobody's views are guaranteed forever because you can do technically whatever you want with your property. But, you know, by making that statement, that tells me that there's not much of an intention to warm up to your neighbors by saying that. Um, so I, I just wanted to point out that this twenty-four foot, I, while I appreciate that it has come down from, it could be thirty-five feet, we still don't really know if it blocks all our views. So that's all.
This is Miranda. I just, Mandy, I just wanted to offer a point of clarification that this quote here came from the architect. Um, the Bull Youngs included me in an email exchange, so it's not a statement or a sentiment of the applicant. It is just the architect's opinion who they consulted with about the view shed analysis.
Understood.
Thank you, Miranda, and uh, thank you, Mandy, for the comment. Anyone else? If not, I will bring this back to the board. Uh, as a reminder, we're looking tonight for a motion to approve the P U D and associated density increase. Uh, we've had some discussion about adding in a condition from the Board of Trustees to limit the height to twenty-four feet, one inch. And there is also one additional change that uh, the, the paperwork involved, uh, I believe the Bull Youngs have formed uh Little Bear LLC, which will be the name. So there will be a minor change to the paperwork just to rec, to recognize that it'll be uh Little Bear LLC uh referenced within the P U D and density increase.
And Mayor, this is Jennifer Madsen. Sorry to chime in. I just wanted to let you know that there is a draft resolution um that's in the packet that could be used for a motion to approve with those, with those two amendments to the owner of the property and to limit the building height to twenty-four feet, one inch.
Yeah, scrolling to the resolution. How would you suggest in the resolution add the twenty-four feet?
I was about to ask that question. Uh, would, would this be done by we move to approve and then move to amend? Is that the procedure?
I, I think that um, as long as it's clear in terms of the motion, that it's a motion to approve the resolution twenty twenty dash thirty-three. Yes, the amendments um to both the resolution and the P U D for the ownership, proper owners of the property, and then also to indicate in the P U D agreement that the owners um have agreed and there is a condition of a height limitation on the structures of twenty-four feet, one inch. Um.
Right, section two of the P U D agreement has the conditions with which the owners uh comply.
This would be an amendment two E.
Yes, correct.
So you're proposing this be done in the motion and not in a motion followed by an amendment?
Correct.
All right. I am prepared to move, we approve twenty twenty. Please proceed.
This is just a process question. I'm just, you know, because the application does say not to exceed twenty-four feet, one inch, and it says a lot of other things about what this property will entail. I'm sorry. Uh, when we're voting to approve this, are those not um by default already kind of restrictions? I'm, I'm a bit confused as to what the point the application is, if those restrictions are not already there, like why we need to amend anything?
The only amendment we're making is to The only amendment we're making is to lower the height from what is written at 24, 28.4 to 24.1.
I, I understand your, your question, Trustee Kums Ismael. Um, I think it's, you know, the, what you're, you have been presented with a specific plan and you want to make sure that the developer, um, builds the structures in conformance with the plan that you have been presented with.
Right.
And yes, all of that is part of this approval. What, what the 24 feet, one inch will do is, what happens with a, a PUD is this is specific zoning that's going to be to this area. So then should this structure be, um, for some reason destroyed or removed, um, this PUD would remain on the property and the height limitation would still be 24 feet, one inch?
I understand. Thank you.
Trustee Taylor, I believe the floor is back to you.
So I move to approve 2020-33 with the amendment to section two E, lowering the maximum height of the building from 28.4 feet to 24 feet, one inch.
I'll second.
Ready to call a vote. Okay, Mayor Larson? Trustee Kums Ismael?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhover?
Yes.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
Trustee App?
Yes.
Trustee App?
Did you hear me? Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yep.
Okay.
Do you have an additional motion, Trustee Taylor?
I don't believe I do. Should I?
Is, is that complete? Are we finished?
The, the, this is Jennifer Madsen. Again, um, sorry for this, another interruption here, but, um, I think it was clear that we needed to change the ownership information on these, on these documentation. This is really just a formality, um, in terms of making sure that we have the correct signers on this, on the agreement. Um.
Shall I move to amend?
We.
Would that be the approach?
I don't know that, I don't know that that's, that that's specifically necessary. Um, I think if everybody can, um.
I, I think for, let's just be careful and, uh, let's have a motion to amend to change the, the ownership to Little Bear LLC.
Okay, that's fine.
Just to be clear, since we are doing this weird Zoom thing and records are records.
Yes.
So then I, I will move to change our agreement to reference Little Bear LLC as the applicant as opposed to the current named applicant.
We have a motion? Do we have a second?
I will second it.
Second from Trustee Danforth. Miranda?
Um, Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Trustee Danforth?
Yes.
Trustee App?
Yes.
Trustee Taylor?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Baumhover?
Yep. Yep.
Trustee Corvallin?
Yes.
Trustee Kums Ismael?
Yes.
And I just wanted to clarify. So the, the applicant just sent me a message that it's Little Bear Village LLC. I think at one point in time it was said as Little Bear LLC, so I'm just offering that clarification.
Little Bear Village LLC. Friendly amendment taken. The joys of this, sorry.
Oh, this is, this is Jennifer Madsen. Again, we'll get documentation from the applicant to show the proper ownership of the, of the property.
Very good. This is the awkwardness of running meetings in Zoom and, uh, but I appreciate everyone putting up with the, trying to be a little overly careful with some of our votes and decisions so that we do have a, stay a good, clear record for years from now when we are back to meeting in person. So, uh, congratulations, Ellen, Dennis, uh, Little Bear Village LLC. For all of you guys have done to, to work with us, to work with community, work with all the residents of Netherland, and we really look forward to, to having, having your building start and, uh, some new neighbors in the near future.
Thank you for your approval. Um, yeah, thank you very much. And we're excited to get started.
We are too. All right. Thank you guys all very much. I believe that was our final action item or final agenda item for this evening. Uh, do any of these have news or things I'd like to raise before we go to adjournment?
Uh, yeah, I, I would like to find out how do we get us a site review made mandatory, uh, the view shed. If I can't, I'm having a hard time with the right word that everyone was talking about, that they didn't do for this project. How can we make that be part of, um, you know, the code for buildings?
I think that would be one of those good things that if we, uh, the board is interested in it and we have an out of four from the trustees here tonight, that would be a great thing to pass to the planning commission to take a look at, uh, the, those, uh, issues and see if there's a place within the code for that, or if it is more of a process and procedure within the building department.
Okay. What's it called? A few review? What's it?
View shed analysis.
That's it. View shed analysis. Yeah, I was like. I would like to have that passed along.
Basically, what we're looking for. Plan, look at that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be good.
So, um, trustees weigh in if we just have a not a four?
Yes, let's do it. I, I would like that. Um, I would like to give the planning commission some, uh, I guess some background on exactly what are we considering the view shed? Are we considering the mountains of view shed? Are we considering lumpy tongue, the view shed? Are we considering every tree, the view shed? Are we talking about the divide? Are we talking about?
I guess, I guess.
It's, it's kind of hard to toss such a large thing to the planning commission without giving them, um, I guess some context and some structure.
Well, how about if like the neighbors are requesting that, or if the BOT requests it, it's something they have to do, but not something somebody would have to do just, you know, as routine, but.
Think what we were getting at in public comment was the idea that we require within our code, view sheds analysis done, um, as part of the preliminary work for these projects. You know, I think we get into a little bit of a sticky issue if we just want to say that if the seven BOT members want a view shed analysis of this project because the neighbors there were a little bit more, you know, active in the public process. I think that's the benefit of this PUD process we, that these developers chose to go through was that it actually opens up the potential for this increased communication where the neighbors really do have a say at both the planning commission level and up the BOT level. Um, Ron did point out they could have just built these buildings per code and meant the building code. And then this process would have not been a, you know, two, three planning commissions and a BOT, and we would not have had the ability to work with these developers and put these requirements on them per the desires of the neighborhood. So I think this is a larger discussion that I'm not sure, I would rather see planning commission and BOT sit in on, discuss this because as the architect pointed out, yeah, it, I think this is a code work session issue because the, in the past, there has been parts of the code to preserve the Netherland, uh, ridgeline is one thing. I believe during the time Scott Brungen was mayor 15 years ago, um, that's part of why we purchased the Wingate property that we just finally paid off was to preserve the Netherland ridgeline so that we wouldn't see houses up on that ridgeline. So I think before we can throw this at the planning commission and say, write up a code and write up, you know, put this in a legal requirement for developers, we need to know what is the view shed we're trying to protect. And I think to do that, we would have to really reach out to the community again and have this be a larger discussion than just, let's change our code to require a view shed analysis. I know it's common in Boulder, in Boulder and in Boulder County. That is also mostly common in areas where the development is backed up to open space, forest lands. So I'll, I'll leave it there, but I'm definitely hesitant to just say, let's kick this to the planning commission and say, write some new code. Maybe can you analyze the code? And it would be helpful to have Roger Cornell's experience being on the planning commission for 20 years to say, yeah, actually we have some, some of these ideas kicking around. Let's compile it, get in the work session and see if we can really dial down effective language in the code that really allows developers to know what the expectation is.
I, I wonder if this, this is Julian. I, I wonder if this wouldn't be a good candidate for some member of the BOT who's interested in this to produce work that suggests the larger proposal. And that way at least we have a working document from which we can begin a discussion with the planning commission, at least allowing the planning commission to understand our, uh, our mind on this before mutual discussions begin.
I like that idea.
But I just have a question back to you saying Jonathan, on what Ron was saying, that the builders could basically have just built whatever they wanted without BOT approval. Then what was the point of all this?
Well, they could have built eight to 35 feet, but not as many units.
Correct.
Why not as many units?
That's the whole density increase piece we just did is they had to do a density increase.
That's the only reason it went before us. Otherwise, um, those things don't go before the BOT. I got you.
It was a PUD, so a planned unit development versus specific buildings being built as individual structures. Yes, they wanted a density increase, which was part of what they could do through the, but the benefit of a PUD process in general is that increased discussion and the increased input by the community. And if PUDs are a long, arduous process, it's a lot harder than building of getting a building permit, getting it engineered. So it shows intent on the part of the developer to actually care about the neighborhood. And it really is, even the first step of engaging in the PUD process shows the intent to care about what the neighbors think and to engage and be a part of the community, not just come in for maximum benefit for themselves.
Yeah, but I mean, this was just, they had to do that.
Yeah.
Developing to have the increase, right? I mean, without the increase, they don't get to rent out as many units. So that, that's not really the point here, I don't think. I mean, I think, and I don't think of view shed analysis, we have to determine what the view is, uh, generically for every neighborhood and for every building. Uh, you do a view shed analysis and simply do the analysis for the building that's in question.
Yeah.
But what's the view that you're analyzing, Eric?
Depends on where you're at, doesn't it?
It depends on where you're at. It depends on what people can see.
I think this is an opportunity.
Sleeping giant, if that's the view or no.
Hold on, hold on. I think this is an opportunity where we, the commission has already heard this proposal. So they're aware of the concerns and the ideas behind the view shed. So what we can do? And look at what other communities, other mountain communities have done, do their, the research into what a proposal might be. Let's not jump straight to code. Let's have them start with research and come up with a view shed analysis proposal that works for Netherland. And then that then becomes the, the basis for a work session between the Board of Trustees and the planning commission before we have them actually start tackling code. Because this may not be something we want to enshrine in code. This may be something that becomes procedural as part of any building application or something like that. So that's a, a couple steps down the road. So we could direct them to do the research and come up with a proposal, um, that works for Netherland based on our unique circumstances.
Makes really good sense to me.
I just think when working with the planning commission, I think it's important to really have a presentation on a view shed analysis to begin with to get an idea of if that's, if it even gives us the information we're looking for. I think there is some ambiguity of whether or not the view shed would show us what, what everyone's striving for, which is really the impact of the community. So I guess my, if you're directing to this, to the planning commission, my recommendation would be that on that level, we start with that presentation prior to further discussion and research.
Agreed. Yeah. Yeah. Just go, you know, come, put it on to their plate as something and they, you know, start with the education, the research and then session discussion.
Okay, got it.
So I saw Eric doing the thumbs up. Tanya, you nodding for, I think that sounds good?
Yeah.
Trustee Apt? Jonathan, Julian? Lindsay?
Comes up for me.
I'm interested to start the discussion. I'm, I'm wary of the can of worms this creates, um, from a land use perspective, from a, from a landowner's perspective and rights to a certain extent, uh, especially with the ambiguity of the town's code already. This is throwing in another potential ambiguity in there. Um, and if the point is to create clarity for folks, I'm not, I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding it. I, I love the intent and I love this idea of let's see the impact, but I'm not sure, I guess, as Miranda kind of pointed out, that a view shed analysis is necessarily the best tool that this town could use to really, um, analyze that. So let's direct the planning commission. I would like to, to hear their thoughts and it would be interesting to dig back into some of the land use codes from the, I guess that would be mid nineties that had some of this in it, um, about historical code, protecting historical views, yada, 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 and looking into why we moved away from that language and the problems that it created for builders and developers during the mid nineties to early 2000s.
So, uh, this is Julian. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, you go ahead.
Uh, this is Julian and I agree with Mayor Proton Baumhover on this. And that's why I think back to Bertrand Russell, who said, everything is vague until someone attempts to make it clear. And that's why I like the idea, if the Board of Trustees has a preponderance of members who believe that further, um, further requirements may be helpful and appropriate, I think it's important to have a member of the BOT put this into words. That not only clarifies it in that BOT member's mind, but it also allows that BOT member to help the rest of the BOT clarify it in their minds. And that means once we understand what we really think needs to be done, then that can be presented to the planning commission with our request. So at least the planning commission understands that we have thought this through and we have a good feel for what we originally thought the problem was and what we think might be the components of the solution. So the only reason I'm hesitant at all on following the mayor's suggestion as is, is this notion that it would be nice to have this clarified within the BOT prior to passing it to the planning commission. I think that is where we get into that can of worms problem. If we pass it without clarifying our own understanding.
Could not agree more. You put that in such nice words, Julian. Thank you.
This is, uh, Alan and I, uh, I don't disagree. I think it is a potential can of worms. On the other hand, um, we don't know what we don't know. And I think, you know, Jonathan's idea of looking at maybe his previous codes or what other communities are doing, you know, makes a lot of sense. But I do think, I understand neighborhood concerns when they're on the edge of maybe a commercial district where somebody could do 35 feet. Um, on the, on the other hand, if you're a homeowner and somebody buys. On the, on the other hand, if you're a homeowner and somebody buys a lot next to you, they can get 10 feet from the corner of your house. It's completely legal. And they could build, I don't know what the building restrictions are, if they can go more than two stories or not. And then if you had a view there, it could be good. And so there's no way to negotiate with that home builder or your neighbor, your new neighbor. At the same time, if you've put on solar panels at some point on your, someplace on your house, and then you have a neighbor that decides to block the solar panels, that's more than a view issue. That's something to be considered as well. And they both come into height issues. An adjacent building with height, it can block solar, it can block views. So I think, you know, I might, I don't want to take this on with a memo, but I think it's, it's something that we should let the planning commission discuss based on what's out there. And, you know, I think they're going to be a lot more knowledgeable. Cynthia is going to be a lot more knowledgeable than we are in terms of trying to define or, yeah, I'd say define the issue. I don't think we necessarily have the wherewithal to do that.
Well, I think a way to maybe merge these two ideas is to, let's hold off sending this to the planning commission right now. Let's have town staff bring to us a, a presentation, something, a view shed presentation, so that we can all kind of, as an informational item, so that we can come to a sort of a better understanding ourselves about what the options are. And then we can direct, then we can tell, give a better direction to the planning mission, tying in things like Jonathan brought up of looking at historical code and the reasons. And then the stuff that Alan just brought up in terms of renewable energy, all of these pieces into one coherent ask of the planning commission. So I know they've been pretty, they've been working pretty hard over the last few months and have had pretty full plates. And I hate to send them something too ambiguous, ambiguous that then could maybe take them off and they might go in a direction that doesn't quite match what we think we thought we asked them to do. So how is that proposal strike, everyone, is to bring this as an informational item to the board of trustees to talk about view shed analyses and a better direction, the outcome of that being better direction to the planning commission.
I mean, I might even wonder if, if, if view shed analysis is really the, the right term for what, what we're asking for here. Like it might be something more akin to relative building heights or something in, in that vein. So I would want to limit, limit it to only this idea of the like GIS view shed analysis. Maybe there is a more elegant, even simpler solution to put into town code that makes it easier, easier for everyone, developers included. I don't know though, because I'm not an expert.
And, and I agree with Eric. This is Julian. The, this is, this is part of my concern. The view shed analysis is a solution. And the next question is, what is the problem we're trying to solve? And I think what Eric is striving at is that if we could better define our perceived problem, at that point, a wide array of solutions, which may include a view shed analysis, may make themselves clear to us.
So it seems like impact analysis is really what we're looking at because we're, we're discussing this neighborhood, particularly Third Street right now, but we have to, if we're looking at this as potentially a requirement in town, you're going to have a different impact for the different neighborhood. As Julian, you pointed out, there's our neighborhood commercial versus other place. There's houses going up down on Third Street right now that are 30 feet, very similar in design. Hardyboard, pretty basic. Yes, they have some gables and they have, you know, covered, covered awnings over their porches, particularly at Cruz Projects. They fit within the quality there. So I think what we're really looking at is more of a holistic impact. And part of the problem, I guess I get into being a BOT member when we get into PUD processes, is we discuss the character of Netherland and we discuss the character of neighborhoods, but we haven't qualified that. And I'm not sure if that's actually the BOT's prerogative to do that so much as the neighborhood's prerogative to do that. And I think so often on the BOT, we're less guessing what neighborhoods want without actually having a conduit to get that information and really chew on it and then be able to enact policies and basically processes within our code that allow for the neighborhood to feel their voices heard. So I kind of go back to always that it would be really nice somehow to neighborhoods and have neighborhoods self define themselves. And whether we tack that on to our current zoning districts and start to actually do an outreach. I think this is a much larger process than we were envisioning it right now. I think this is really the first toe in to really potentially overhauling our entire land use code again. And that's kind of what the, some of the merit of the comments I'm getting from the public is let's really look at the 20, the 35 foot requirement. Does that really fit in a place like, you know, Third Street versus Big Springs? Let's look at the requirements. It definitely doesn't really fit in a place like Old Town, but there has been houses that have hit that 35 feet that have recently gone up. So I, I think we need to be really careful about how far we go in this, and I'd like to keep this more as an informational and discussion item between both the BOT and the planning. So yeah, Mayor, I like your idea of let's bring this back, but let's bring this back as looking at land use tools that already exist of impact analysis, neighborhood analysis, you know, view shed analysis is one, density analysis. I believe that within the land use session, all of these frameworks already exist. We just need to get more information on them and bring them into the Netherland fold.
Town staff, does that, does that work for you guys or is that asking a enormous amount?
I think that works for us. I mean, we're going to need some time for sure. So maybe tentatively that second meeting in December, if not January, just to make sure that we're capturing, to Jonathan's point, all the different tools and, and various items that you can really look at. We're going to need some time to do this.
But this is, this is Karen, and I really suggest that we don't expect staff to come up with anything until January at the earliest.
No, I don't think that this is something that can be rammed, you know, through the BOT. And if we're going to go, if we're going to expand this to beyond, you know, the, a height issue and really talk about overall development impact in different neighborhoods, then I, I mean, I wouldn't expect even January seems a little too early to put together something of that magnitude. So I think that this is something we can take our time with, but that we should be pretty considered with, especially if we're going to expand it to be an overall kind of land use impact discussion.
And we're also going into our non-building time, you know, as winter hits in, so you've got a little time.
I mean, I think that, you know, I apologize for Cindy and I, that if we could really be looking at this in January, that's, that will give us, you know, two months to really dig into it. And to Karen's point, we are heading into the slower building season. So now is the really, the best time for us to work on that.
Any trustees have calls about that proposal?
That sounds fine to me.
Alan, that sounds good to me.
All right. Great. Thank you, Tanya, for bringing that up. Any other other business?
Can I, this is Miranda. Can I just do a plug for the Makers Mark contest?
Yes.
Great. So I just sent an email to the board of trustees and also have publicized it on Facebook, but the town is interested in applying for a Makers Mark contest. It's a bright light contest where we could get up to $100,000 in light displays for the holiday season. Our feeling is just it's been kind of a rough year and we canceled a lot of really great festivals, unfortunately, under COVID. So being able to decorate the town is an opportunity for us to bring kind of that holiday cheer. So the way the contest works is that you would have to do a plug for why Netherland is a great community on either Instagram or Facebook. And then in your comment, which is, you know, around 300 words, you would tag at Makers Mark and then do a hashtag, make it remarkable. Happy if any community members are interested in doing this, to send them the instructions. But board of trustees and town staff have all those details in an email I sent last week, and then I sent you another reminder today. So please help us with that.
All right. We all have our homework. Go pour yourself a Makers Mark and write 200 words of wild, Netherland is remarkable. Yeah. Anything else? Who'd like to make a motion?
Motion to.
Mayor Baumhofer got there. Who's got the second?
This is Julian. I second.
Motion second. Miranda.
Mayor Larson.
Yes.
Trustee Taylor. Yes. Trustee Taylor.
Everybody, yes.
Trustee App.
Yes.
I don't know if I can't hear people. Trustee App, are you?
Yes. Can you hear me?
Yeah. I don't, it might be my phone. I'm not hearing anyone. But Mayor Proton Baumhofer.
Yep.
Trustee Corvillan.
Yes.
Trustee Kung Ismail.
Yes.
And Trustee Danforth, I'm circling back to you real quick.
Yeah, see, I didn't hear you call my name, but yes.
Yeah.
All right. 9:21, meeting adjourned. Thank you guys all so much. Have a wonderful night and talk to you all soon.
Bye.
Thanks, everyone.
Night, everyone.
Bye-bye.